All right, I'd like to call the Sherburne School meeting to order at 6:06-ish. And thank you all for coming, especially coming in earlier time. The reason we're doing this is because of the elections, and we'd like to be done before the election is over, ideally. And besides, it gives us a chance to have a little celebration at the end. I'd like to start by recognizing our friends who will be rolling off the Sherburne School Committee after serving for six years. And I'd just like to say that I remember meeting Frank running for school committee with his Frank Hook, with his dalmatian and the placards. And it's sort of, I feel like it's sort of fitting that that was the last really heavily contested race, and now you're rolling off, and it's a heavily contested race to take over your spots.
That'd be so much interest.
That's true. So Frank Hook, over the years, has provided not just insight, in large part because of his experience as a teacher himself, but also because of his interest in the health and wellness of our students. And the other thing, which people may not remember, but some years back, he was really instrumental in starting us thinking about alternative forms of raising funds for the school. And interestingly, at the time, we all kind of pushed back, but now there's that renewed interest in finding alternative sources of funding. So you are ahead of your time. So we really are gonna, we're gonna miss you, we're gonna miss your insight, we're gonna miss your thoughtful comments, and we'll miss your sense of humor. And so we want to thank you on behalf of the Sherburne School Committee and, sorry, and everyone else. We thank you very much for all your years of service, Frank.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to get to open it now?
Yes.
Sure, go right up. Rock. Oh, beautiful, look at that, it's like apple. Beautiful, very nice, thank you so much.
And for Frank Hess, who served as chair for two years, generally we serve for one and then move on, and nobody wanted to do it, Frank's like, "All right, I'll do it again." So we appreciated that. And we've really appreciated especially all of his work on the Capitol Committee and are very fortunate that he's going to continue, because we wouldn't let him leave, on the Capitol Committee as an at-large member, which we are so thankful for. And I have a feeling that you will still be, like, if I have questions, I'll still be calling you up, because you know pretty much everything.
Sure.
And you'll keep this finger on the pulse, I'm sure, of Pine Hill and of all the districts. So thank you so much for all of your years of service and your incredible experience and knowledge. And I also appreciate personally all the help you've been to me this year as chair. When I've come to you with questions, you've always had the answer, or at least you knew who would have the answer if I didn't know. So I really appreciate that, and we're really gonna miss you, big shoes to fill.
Thank you.
You probably think it's an apple.
I'm not supposed to give out the answer.
Ooh, they are heavy.
Thank you very much.
Is there any public comments? All right, so CSA report, please, you've got this Jen.
Hi, yes, thanks for having me at your meeting. I'll keep it brief so you can get on with your celebration, but I would like to let you know how we're going. Things are going along nicely at the CSA. We just kicked off our Fund for Excellence fundraiser, which happens on the off-year of the auction, so every other year. And it's a letter that goes to each family at Pine Hill highlighting what the CSA does for the school. It's estimated that we spend approximately $200 per student at Pine Hill. We funded 29 enrichment programs this year, and as well as we give teachers stipends, teacher grants, and we also give grants to students graduating from Dover Sherburne High School. And one of our enrichment programs happening soon that we're pretty excited about is Michael Tagheas, the author of The Finest Hours. He'll be visiting grades three through five in the classroom soon, and Finest Hours is being made into a Disney movie, so that could also have some relevance to some of the kids. I think they're excited about that. As I mentioned too, we're in the process of granting two seniors, a male and a female graduating students who went to Pine Hill, a grant scholarship of $250 each. We've got about three boy essays from boys and probably seven from girls. So we're just, the deadline was Friday, so we're just going through those now, and we'll award them soon. Another thing that we just kicked off fundraising type thing is we're selling Pine Hill Panther T-shirts, and we're kind of getting that on the ground. They decided that Panthers should be, the children decided Panthers should be the mascot for Pine Hill. So we're going, we're running with that, and we're starting to sell the T-shirts. So the kids seem to be excited about that. As far as the board goes, we're looking for a couple of new volunteers. Our volunteer coordinating chair is leaving, and we're looking for a new one for that position. We filled our enrichment chairs, they're both leaving and moving on, but we found replacements for them, so we're doing well in regards to that. We could always need more help, but we'll keep looking. And another thing, on a final note, we're also finalizing our budget for the CSA for next year. We started our first draft, actually I just got an email today, the treasurer sent it to Angie and I, so we're just looking at that, and we're going to finalize it for next school year. So lots of fun, exciting, busy things are happening. That's all I have. Thank you.
What color's the panther? Is it a pink panther?
We're doing paw prints, and Pine Hill is green, so the shirts are green and they have paw prints on them. We tried to find Panthers that weren't scary or too babyish, so we came up with paw prints.
That works.
Well, thank you for having me, I am going to speak.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, we're gonna move on to the administration reports. We'll start with principal report.
Well, thank you. Piggybacking on some of the CSA updates that Jen mentioned, I'd like to thank the CSA, they provided a teacher appreciation breakfast just this morning, and made lots of yummy treats, which teachers greatly appreciated. And also, last Thursday, through CSA enrichment funding, our fifth grade chorus, all of our students in fifth grade participate in chorus, and they were, had the opportunity for an Artist in Residence Day with an acapella group from Boston called Ball in the House. And it culminated in a family performance in the evening, which the Hesses were there for, and our students, through music, through acapella, and beatboxing, which, which had a lot of appeal to our students, you know, I'm not gonna do it because I'll spit on camera, but it was, it was very, it was a great family event, an opportunity for our students to showcase new learning. Hot on the hill right now, we started our, Math MCAS started up today in our fifth grade, and, but the big news on the hill is our new school pet, the Gecko. We researched non-allergenic opportunities to have a pet at school, and it has arrived. I wanted to update that we are, grade level teams are very much on track for the ambitious school improvement goal of publishing literacy curriculum, reading and writing curriculum by our June deadline, so we've had lots of inquiry and drafting and brainstorming, and we're in the process of helping teachers to upload curriculum. When I see you next, we'll be able to report on kindergarten orientation, which will be taking place on June 6th. There's no school for current kindergartners on Monday, June 6th, in Sherburne. That's the day that our 63 prospective kindergarten students will come, meet their teachers, and have a, have a little go at visiting kindergarten. Kudos to Mr. Carnes, our PE and health teacher, for initiating Get Up and Move Day. Last Friday, we spent about a half hour as a school community exercising on a walking slash running course outside. The preschoolers blew me away, not to mention the older students. It was great feedback from everyone, and we will do that more often, perhaps not for a full half hour, that was a little fatiguing for some of us, but it was great to get up and move together. I wanted to acknowledge that Rachel Correa is the Pine Hill recipient for this year's Norfolk Teacher of the Year Award. We and Rachel's colleagues will all be recognizing her at the ceremony on June 9th. Congratulations to Pine Hill's Judy Carnes, our food service director. Our students bestowed on her at last Friday's all-school meeting the Lunch Hero Award, and I forget the organization off the top of my head, but she was nominated and received that award, so it was, it was, she is our hero. And I also wanted to recognize and thank one of our DS high school students, Scott Siri. He's in ninth grade, and he has undertaken a makeover on our bird trail as part of his Eagle Scout project. And as you all are aware, our third graders especially spent a lot of time out on the bird trail as part of the year-long bird study, and all of us appreciate the beautiful nature behind our school. So that's the gist of my principals' report this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Lots going on, busy time of year. All right, so we'll move on to the assistant superintendent report with Dr. Wood.
Thank you very much. New to Dover Sherburne is a curriculum review cycle. You have some literature there that explains the curriculum review cycle, but over the past couple of years, we focused on putting all of our content to the understanding by design format, which I've spoken about before here, but now it's time for us to look at curriculum in a systemic way. So if you look at the documents that I gave, we're gonna look at instruction curriculum, assessment, in the areas of also leadership and professional development, and then we'll start that curriculum review next year with the science, technology, engineering, and computer science. I've mentioned here before that the state recently updated the science, technology, engineering standards in January of 2016, and the computer science standards, while they're in draft form, we have a robust computer science program here at the elementary schools, so we'd like to highlight that. So we'll start with that, doing a content review and research. We'll do surveys of families, of staff, of students, and of leaders, and get a sense of what the curriculum is all-encompassing, looking at it from all directions. And a formal report will come to you probably in November, based on the research that happens here. We'll be looking at a K-12 for that vertical alignment to assure when our students transition from grade five to grade six, the quality science concepts and technology engineering concepts are there. So that's just a brief overview of the curriculum review cycle, certainly. Any comments before I move on to the end?
Any surveys that are used, like for family, that type of thing, can we see those?
Sure.
It'd be nice to be helpful. And I would just add down, if you just get down to educator surveys, that is, any kind of surveys that are passed out, it would be nice to see what they're saying.
Sure. It's based on the National Study of School Evaluation surveys, and we tailor them for Sherburne.
Yeah, well, and some, if committee members are also parents, they might see those things for us that are not parents.
Can I ask also, is the success of the UBD also being looked at seeing how it's being implemented in the classroom, not just the curriculum, but sort of how that process is being implemented? Because I know that it was, it was sort of brought in, it was kind of a buzz thing, and I was just wondering, curious if it's been looked at to see how it's really working, just the process, the UBD process opposed to the specific curriculum, does that make sense?
It does. We'll actually be looking at whether educators are using the essential questions as ways to frame learning, those content objectives are given to kids ahead of time so they know what they're learning. Assessments aren't listed in the UBD units yet, but hopefully in the future those will be added, and just some learning activities that could be documented there. So educators will be looking at those documents in particular to determine next steps in the curriculum itself.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
And as I've said here, the Education Technology Plan, the National Education Technology Plan came out in January of 2016, and the district has undertaken the process of writing an update for our Dover Sherburne Education Technology Plan. The one that we had before was from 2011 to 2016. So you have the draft of what was put together, looking at technology and learning and how, teaching and learning, and how the technology supports that. Looking at, you can see we brought together the Technology Advisory Committee, from whom Mr. Hess and Mr. Embry also sat and gave us some feedback, and also a district-wide technology committee, director of technology, technology integration specialists, and representatives for each of the schools, including leadership. And they looked at the five areas of teaching, learning, assessment, infrastructure, and leadership, again, you can see some of the same themes from the curriculum review, and certainly putting together a way for the districts to then project out till 2021 our next five-year plan, what's next for teaching, learning, assessment, infrastructure, and leadership. This becomes the basis for the technology plan supplements that you see in October and November, which then determine funding sources. But I think the important part of this tech plan is that it gives us a sense of what's next. And just to define technology, this is technology, my iPad's technology, your phone is technology. So whatever types of technology are useful in the classroom is what you'll see here. So there's a lot to look at, there are certain goals and benchmarks that were lifted from that national plan and adapted for Dover Sherburne. Just looking for this for your information, you'll send, we'll get your feedback prior to the June joint meeting where we'll come together, where all of the three school committees will be together. So during the June timeframe, if there's more comments that you'd like to make during those sessions, certainly.
Can I ask something now, though? So it looks like the goal is to be a one-to-one. It seems to say goal two, it's on page, what, 18?
Yes.
So is the idea then, is the, I'm thinking about, I know that we invested a lot in, I don't remember what it, it's not iPads, but maybe it was iPads, but it becomes obsolete so quickly, so has there been thought about having students bring their own devices? I know they've tried that at the upper levels.
It's to ensure that students have access to the technology. We're currently looking at BYOD in the eighth grade, looking at bringing it to the seventh grade, it's highly functioning at the high school currently. So yes, eventually, in the future, we'll bring it to the elementary level, but I don't see that happening until we push it way out several years. We need to roll it out sixth, seventh, and eighth at the middle school, and then look at what the devices are. I mean, I think phones are evolving to a place where I think an elementary student can use that. I also want to recognize that we still need to have devices for students in the schools. It's not as though that isn't going to go away. We still need to have iPads and Chromebooks, or whatever the new replacement of the Chromebook is. But certainly, and I think the point of this goal is that students have access to a device, not necessarily, we're definitely gonna go one-to-one.
But so if it says access in and out of school, so then if kids don't have one at home, then the school provides?
We're looking at how that plays out.
Okay.
Could be after-school time, a student could access that in after-school.
Okay.
That hasn't been fleshed out, so we're looking at what are the structures, how is it working, and what are the next steps for each of the school buildings?
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Thank you. On the schedule of, for rolling this out, it will be on the agenda for the next June meeting, more formally, to receive and hear many other feedback after members have, perhaps have more time to go through it. And we'll take that feedback, along with the feedback we receive from the Dover and regional committee members, and then we'll package that into a final draft that we will approve of that the joint, joint, joint school agreement at the end of June.
Okay, so we'll talk about it more in our June than the joint one?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
And then this will become the basis for the tech plan supplements. I meant to say, I wanted to thank Lloyd Ryan for her input, she's here with us this evening, and McColda, Dr. Brown, and Tracy B M E for the people from Pine Hill who helped to support the writing of this draft.
Excuse me, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, Mr. McCalda.
Educator surveys?
That's for information, the educator surveys are, have been administered at the elementary level. We're gonna collect the data by grade level, how what the individual's teacher results are, we're being anonymous for this first evaluation.
So, so the, so it says educators at the regional participate in commercially crafted tri-pot survey, is that, that's the students or the educator?
Actually, yes, the educators will complete a survey on their building administrator during the, the day 23rd to June 3rd.
Educator surveys, but what we're talking about here are something given to the kids, right?
Correct. So staff.
And why, can, I mean, I'd like to see a copy of that survey, just to get some sense of what it's like. And I'm assuming the kids at high school are gonna be participating in a, in a survey, they're gonna be given a survey too?
Yes, during the day 23rd to June 3rd, students will be participating in a survey of their, a select group of educators, so no student will take more than two surveys at the high school level, which means we have multiple teachers. This is a stratified random sampling, and then the educators will take a survey on their administrator.
So how, maybe it's not the appropriate time, but I'm curious how that feedback is incorporated into the, into the evaluation. I mean, that's probably a detailed question, but, you know, I mean, it's like.
I think that's a good one, good question.
It's, it's one piece of evidence, we look for how, what's students' perceptions about their, the study of whatever the content is, how they are responding to their learning, and the way the educator delivers that content. So it's, it's the feedback that the teacher receives that helps to inform their instruction. What I found is that most educators do this informally, and we're just taking a formal lens.
Okay. So if I could, I mean, if you can email that to us, or the survey itself?
That's right. Yes, thank you again. So as of now, in the system that the state has developed, these students' survey results, teachers will receive them, and they're anonymous, but only the teachers receive the results to work out.
Yeah, I just wanted to see the survey itself.
Yes, no, no, we'll do that, but I thought you asked what the impact would be on evaluation.
Oh, okay. So you're saying that only the teachers see that?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes, right now.
But there's, I've heard talk of, then it becoming part of, is that maybe not anymore? Part of the formal evaluation?
It is, it's one, one small piece that is shared in the summative conversation.
Right.
But not a component where you look at this survey and determine.
But that has not yet.
But not yet.
But it's used differently at Pine Hill than would be at the high school, I assume, right? I mean, just from reading about the, sort of, the results of some of these surveys that have come up with, it's harder to get the meaningful information from a second grader than it is an 11th grader, I guess, but maybe not.
Well, I think that, I think that that could be argued both sides, and could be argued at all levels. But, but again, the, the, all of the processes that were envisioned, all the components, the teacher evaluation protocols were envisioned back in 2012, and the state adopted this new process, are still being rolled out, and even the component about impact on the student work, teachers' rating, that has not yet been formalized, that has been, there's been an ongoing discussion at the department level. So, so we may see some tweaks and adjustments as we go forward, but the surveys are still in the, last year they were administered here, pilot, pilot, and this year is the first year where everyone is being, everyone is involved in the surveys, albeit at the high school level, not every student is being surveyed for every teacher. So this still, this is still developing, but yes, we will provide you with copies of the surveys that students survey, and as well as the teacher surveys.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. McCalda.
Thank you. Good evening all. There were three pieces to the Intercommentee Report tonight. In your packet, it was some more detailed information about the Special Education Director's search, a quick update of the positions posted through school spring. I think that we had a very, very active and vigorous response to our posting. More than 30 candidates, 32 actually filed application materials for the position. Search Advisory Committee's been established, and those members are identified in your packet. Representing Pine Hill School is Special Education Teacher Matt Manning, and Principal Barbara Brown will be on the search committee as well. Also representing the leadership team is Mr. Smith, the high school headmaster, representing the Sherburne School Committee, Sisavi. And we have two parents, Paige Coogee from Dover and Nicole Niner from Sherburne, as well as one of our team chairs who works at the high school, Mindy Roberts and Isaac, representing the high school, and another staff, the first school psychologist, Carrie Morris, representing the school. So we have staff representatives from the different factions of the faculty, a team chair representative, a resident service representative, a teacher. So at least about that, our two parents' representatives. The Search Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow, and the goal of tomorrow's meeting will be to identify candidates that would be invited to interview. The schedule is attached, so you can take a look at that. We're hoping to complete those interviews during the week, next week. And as a heads up, and I know we'll do some kind of survey, I think, of all of our school committee members?
I've surveyed, we'll be.
You'll have, right?
Yeah, the three of us so far. But just to let you know that on that Wednesday night, the 25th, the Underclassmen Awards, starting at 6:30, they're like six, probably five or six.
Okay.
And also the twenty-fourth is the drama banquet, and that only impacts two parents, but two school committee people, but they happen to be two of the reps to the search.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out there. Sorry.
We're going to do the best we can to get this done. But I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm, I'm impressed with a number of the candidates who are in our pool. A lot of experience. So we're, we're going into the process with high expectations. The second item, I just wanted to give you some information on spending the news the last month or so regarding lead and copper in water testing in schools. Provided you with copies of the last two-year reports. Sherburne School Committee supported annual water testing. Annual, annual testing is not a habit of the regulations, but that's been done here. And you'll see from the results that Pine Hill School, the water, water, water sample is well within what the limits are for lead and copper. The state has released a request for interest in a pool of money to move the dollars to help schools test. And based on the results, assistance is needed to provide technical assistance. We are going to take advantage of that and file a request for interest. I assume that many, many, almost all districts will probably do that. I don't know if the two million dollars will be enough, but if we can get some grant money to pay for the water testing, we'll be able to, be able to use the money that's in our budget to, for other things, education-related, of course. But, but the main, the main message here is that, that we, we are testing annually, and our annual results are well within the limit. So we don't see that there's necessarily issue here. We did, Mr. Hess, a very good idea, one of the areas that has not been tested, the two new water refill stations. So we'll be, we'll be good with that, ensuring that, that supply is within the limits as well. Then the last item is.
You might as well just comment on that one before you move on to the next. So first of all, I'm really pleased that you did this and brought this forward. George, I was going to ask about that, and I was expecting probably a report for next month that you were ahead of the game. Thank you very much for doing that. And I certainly know that lead and copper have been, you know, pretty big in the, in the news, and that's this. Are there any other things that they're testing, the Pine Hill water for, in terms of water quality? For example, dissolved solids or hydrocarbons?
Not to my knowledge. I'll have to, I'll have to check. Any reports would suggest that we're not testing for those other items, but rather just the lead and copper?
There's, there's, there's been some testing and some high levels of things in, in different parts of the center of our town. So maybe coordinating with the appropriate people there within town hall on some of those things. But total dissolved solids, hydrocarbons would be two of them that I'd be interested in.
And if I may interject, a couple of parents were concerned in particular about our sodium levels due to some history in town. And we did a fairly comprehensive water test last spring. I don't recall the specifics, except that everything was in normal limits. So somebody at the maintenance department surely has a copy of, of those specs, so we can.
Was that done by the town?
No, it was done by an outside contractor.
Contractor that does whitewater?
That sounds very familiar.
Also, I mean, when I signed the warrants, every once in a while, almost every month, whitewater has a bill for two hundred dollars. And, and every several months, it has a bill for like a thousand dollars. So the thousand, or whatever it is, must be the one for the lead. Okay? But probably every month, they must be checking for something like E. coli or something like that. I mean, I'm not really sure. I never seen any results that warned us of anything. But we do spend two hundred dollars a month to have somewhat bless our water, you know?
Ralph Kelly and Peter Gimlet probably have that, that level of detail.
I think that given the current public awareness of water in schools, that it might not be a bad thing to have that access to, I don't know, past years, or a summary somewhere online that they could access, parents could access, to assure them that it is in fact being done and that our numbers are within the acceptable range.
So the total dissolved solids will pick up things like the sodium, it will pick up the hardness in the water, and just, that's kind of the general umbrella measurement that does the minerals, the energy. And then the hydrocarbon test would be another kind of umbrella test, which would give you a sense of how those were doing. Not a specific bad hydrocarbon, but if all of them are staying well within, then you have a pretty good sense of what everything is, for the most part, is doing. So.
Yeah, I mean, the, the last thing that came out, I mean, the lead was eighty percent below the allowable limit. So as you say, we're well within it. And, and the copper was ninety percent below the allowable limit. Way below.
But I'm thinking of white, we, I'm assuming the whitewater tests other things, just because...
I recall chlorine.
We're paying much, so much.
Particularly where we're well water.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, I think that, that would be good.
So Ralph should know that. You should get those results.
Or Peter, yeah, and put them online, hopefully. Thank you.
Now, the last piece is the monthly enrollment update. I, I will look through this really quickly. I'd rather have you ask me questions if you have any, and try and adjust for the little randomers. So, so enrollment between January first and May first, we've added seven students across the grade levels since January first, which, which, which just shows that our in-year enrollment has just continued to, to increase by a total of twelve students since, since October first, which, which I would tell you in my experience is a pretty dramatic increase. Now, once schools opened in September, enrollment is pretty stagnant usually. But, but in an environment where we have increasing enrollment, this certainly tells, you know, tells a story. The, the additional student over last month, there were actually two changes that, that the data shows. So there was a seventieth student adding in grade two. There was a seventy-second student adding in grade three. But we did see a drop of a student in grade four, so then that difference was one. If you look at the very bottom.
Also, it looks like there's adding in kindergarten?
I'm sorry, yes. So there was, there was an additional kindergarten for that of three, from three eighty-eight to three ninety-one. If you look at the, the bottom of the page where, where we have the projections, and you've seen this a number of times before, our projection for kindergarten was sixty-five, and that was based on the, the historical we, and for the data we looked at, based on the town census going back five years. We currently have sixty-three students registered for next year. And that's been a firm number for the last few months. That has, that has not changed. However, I imagine we will see changes if we go through this number.
Did we get increasing kindergarten last summer? June? Yeah. About five students.
Okay.
Okay.
So Barbara and I are, we, we talked about this a couple of days ago, and we're going back and looking at the data, just the data from last summer to give us just a sense of what last summer was like.
There's also, just, just so you know, there's about thirty houses under agreement in town right now that haven't sold, that are under agreement to be sold, but haven't been sold. So that could be some indication of move-ins this summer.
Yeah.
Thirty?
Thirty.
So let me just.
Are you a? Positive. Yeah, I, yeah, I'm positive.
Can't say that, man.
Yeah.
That's sort of been.
There's twelve under agreement over a million.
Unless they were five.
So just quickly, for the projections, if we make one assumption that every student who's currently enrolled stays in town and progresses to the next grade, you know, the next grade next year, if we make that assumption, then in grade one, where we have fifty kindergarten students now, we're projecting fifty-seven, there are two stu, according to the data that Barbara has, has collected and been tracking, there are two students whose families have registered them officially for next year, first graders. And then there are three other first graders who parents have contacted the school, the school letting them know that they are planning to move in or have already purchased, you know, waiting, but the students will stocks in September. So above the first grade box, where you see the two plus three, that's two students who have already officially registered for grade one, and three that have let us know if they have interest in getting enrolled in grade one. So if we assume that the fifty kindergarten students will move to first grade, we know of fifty-five students that are likely to enroll, and we projected fifty-seven. So follow, follow that math process. So, so right now, in, in grade one, in grade two, our actual, you know, registered, assuming it will come, and interest are below the projections in grade three. And in grades one and two, in grades three and four, we're already above the projections. So in grade three, we projected seventy-one. You know, in that combination of officially registered and showing interest, we're already at seventy-four. And in grade four, we projected sixty-nine. That number's up to seventy-six. And then in grade five, there's still a little, there's, there's movement there. So that assumption of everyone who's currently registered now moves forward, at this point in time, this gives you a picture in time of what the numbers would be. It will, it's highly unlikely, though, that, that there won't be some out-migration. It most likely will be, we just don't know that right now. And, and now how many that will break up. So that's what we're monitoring. That's what we'll continue to monitor carefully over the six, next six to seven weeks. But just by this data alone, the two, it would seem that the two, the two teachers that are, additional teachers that are in the budget, you know, we showed this in our examples as we were going through the budget process, you know, it looks like grades three and four are being taken. So, but we haven't made any final decisions. So, so those are the numbers now. We'll update them again at the June, at the June meeting. So you'll have another look at them. And Barbara and her staff are putting classrooms together, but they're, they're, they have, they're doing it by, that's certain grade levels having Plan A and Plan B ready to, to roll out when, when it gets to the point where we feel comfortable that we'll be able to finalize that. Kindergarten numbers at sixty-three, you know, and the projection of sixty-five. Now, those numbers are kind of on the bubble, but, but one of the things that will be in place for next year, we want to emphasize is that there will be a full-time teacher system. The reason now, the way it works, if there are three sections, then we have a full-time teacher system assigned to each one of the classrooms. So that's just something that we're keeping in mind. So at this point, Barbara, just kind of quickly talk about where the two classrooms will be located, the possibilities for classrooms based beyond that.
So adding two sections next year, a very logical place to house those classrooms. One will be right here in the center classroom, in that we won't be renewing our lease with the tech collaborative due, due to our increasing enrollment. The second classroom will be in the third grade wing. There's, there's a classroom, as you head down that hallway, the first classroom on the left, that is currently used for tutoring space, specifically English language learner services. So we will creatively find an alternative space for, for those tutoring services. If we determine that we need a third section, particularly in the kindergarten or primary wing, we have a plan for that, and I would consolidate a full-size classroom right next to the teacher's room, where some of our special education service providers, specifically speech therapists, are housed. We would, we would find an alternative space for them.
Can I ask, what was, was there much of a response to your email about the change in procedure at the last day of school?
No, uh, none. I've received no feedback from that so far. The, the placement letter that you're referring to is one that I send out annually. And of course, our, how we transition students is, was spoken to at the end of that letter. So no, no, certainly parents have provided some input with regard to their hopes and dreams for how we cluster students, but not specifically around the change in step-up day as we knew it.
And can I ask, Bill, will we in June come up with some sort of sense of when decisions may be made regarding, or these discussions will happen regarding class sizes? Is there a need to add an additional section or not? Or is that going to be purely by year and we'll see?
Well, we'll certainly have another opportunity to look at whatever day we have by June. Forget the day. And, you know, Barbara and I are just talking about this regularly in terms of how we can be, we want to make sure we're, we're being as efficient as we possibly can, and not make a decision too early that may prompt us in the middle of the summer, you know, to, to have to rearrange class sections. So we'll, I don't, I don't have a full answer on that right now.
I, I would think it'd be important to wait, because if you've got thirty houses under contract, I'm sure they're not all retirees, right? So that sounds, our first, my first thought is, oh my God.
Well, a number of those might be these ones that have given notice, too. They know they've got a house under agreement.
But the people that are moving out of those houses.
Right.
We don't, we don't know, we don't have any idea. And it's not likely, I would say, that there, there are no kids in those houses. So it would seem to me like it would make sense to really wait.
Well, I wasn't thinking of coming up with specific answers in June. I was thinking of looking into the summer.
Yes.
So we have a sense of, like, we know that.
Right.
You know, we'll try to meet the last week in July to discuss, or the first week in August to see, just so people have a sense.
Yeah. And, and I think it would be helpful to perhaps have that conversation at the June meeting, to, to talk about that, and, you know, how we, how that may, how that may roll out. I'm in agreement with you, Greg. I, you know, I, I would like to wait as long as we possibly can, but I'm trying to be sensitive to what has been, you know, a tradition here about notification. And so my goal is to, as I started to talk about it a few months ago during the budget. ago during the budget development process, giving the heads up that we may have to do this to ease into that, and so that it becomes more clear over the next month that, you know, that longstanding tradition, we may have to do something different. Not may, we will have to do something different this year. So I agree, and we need to, you know, I think we need to wait as long as we possibly can.
To be continued.
Yes.
All right. Is that it for your report?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, I also know that, excuse me, we have some capital projects, updates and reports. Who is that? You're doing it?
I think.
You're doing that?
Yes.
You'll start and then he'll chime in?
I think it would be helpful for our expert to chime in and take care of everything that I missed. There are two pieces to this agenda item. The, we want to just provide an update on FY16, but first, what I'd like to do is just spend one, you know, just one minute on the FY17 project update. So as everyone is aware, the capital request of eight two thousand dollars was approved at the annual town meeting on April 26th, and the last page in this packet was the second, the Thursday, that's the page. The chart for our FY17 capital, there are four, there are actually four items, and it's, we've started already to talk about these at the central office. It's, I don't see any issue unless there becomes some scheduling problems with having these projects completed, you know, by the first day of school. We're talking about, three of these projects are really just purchasing equipment, so we'll start working on that and make sure that all the paperwork is completed so that it can be purchased and delivered and installed. Gymnasium walnut mats, I know there's been a lot of work on that done already, so it's just getting an installation date for those, so we'll be able to work through that. And then the update of the technology infrastructure, Mr. Rataco will be, you know, leading that charge, working with Dr. Brown, Mr. Lloyd, and Peter on getting the equipment here and getting the paperwork processed. So for FY17, it's a, it appears to be a, how shall I put it, a simpler process for using the capital money this summer, and I think we'll be in good shape. To go back to FY16.
Can I, one question about that?
Go ahead.
All right. The place in the aerial lift, I mean, that's determined, it's got to be ten thousand dollars to be a capital item, so is that, that's going to be, is that going to be purchased, but it's just not part of capital?
No, so, oh.
For the aerial, the aerial lift, the reason that was deferred, I think.
No, I thought that you were going to say if you could do that out of your regular operating, if there was enough funds.
Well, it didn't qualify as capital.
Right, because it needs the ten thousand.
So it has to be done.
But we didn't specifically include that in our appropriation budget.
And since that's a current need, I don't know how your year's fleshing out, but could that be done from this year's budget?
Yeah, so let's, let's hold on to that thought, and let's bring that up here in the month.
So it just, it just seemed like it was a, from my own, it seemed like it was a, not one say urgent need, that doesn't.
It's a high rate.
Yeah.
It's a safety.
Yeah.
No, I understand that. My only concern is that as we went through the FY17 budget process, that was not included in our budget. So for FY16, the information that's in the packet. The first bit of information is, gives you a historical view. The FY13 capital funds and the FY14 capital, and the FY15 capital funds, those projects have been completed, the funds have been spent on those projects. The reason in FY14, all the capital funds in those FY14 projects have been completed. The reason you don't see the FY14 amount on this chart, which would have been funded at the annual town meeting of thirteen, is that those funds were closed out last year, previous year. So the FY13 and the FY15 funds, those were just fully expended and closed out during this fiscal year, so that's why it's on the chart. For FY16, the current year, the air handlers and UNIVENT project is completed. The good news with these projects is that there was approximately forty-five thousand dollars, a little less than forty-five thousand dollars in green communities grants that were available, received to help fund those projects. So there's about a thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollar balance that was not spent, so that, those funds are there. For the softening roof insulation project, again, the cost to do the work came in much lower than was projected, and a little more than a fourteen thousand dollar green community grant funded the majority, all but four hundred and fifty-seven dollars of that project. That project is completed. The, so there's almost thirty thousand dollars remaining there. The drainage and the curb sidewalk project, that was not completed last summer. There was, there was a lot going on last summer, and that was decided to put a halt until the spring. That project will go forward right after school lets out in June, and that's part of the piece that, you know, that maybe, we may be able to do some additional work that was not envisioned when this project was first, was first laid out, and that is looking at, Frank can help me with this, but looking at some of the island that's in place and removing some of the island in the parking lot that separates the bus loop from the other parking, but we're still looking at that. And then the window project, the design piece has not been completed, so there's still money there, and the intent is that the design work will be completed and that money will be expended during the summer. And that will inform the capital subcommittee as to, that will, that will provide a much better estimate of the cost to complete that project, and it will be considered a shul for FY18 capital, and the balance of that. So that's, that's reporting FY16 capital. Did you want to add anything to that, Frank?
Well, I wanted to talk about the island there, if we could, is that, I went to the public safety meeting, and Barbara was there, too, and they were talking about projects, sorts of projects. They were also talking about the Pine Hill Road extension. And right now, if the buses have to get out, they can't get out because they have a tough time getting over that island. So we either want to do a cut-through on that island, or take the forest strip and take it all out, maybe just paint where the island is, if we're going to loop in there, and that would allow buses to just file out the gravel road at this point in time. In fact, most of the people on the public safety meeting would like to see if shoes the buses go out that way on a regular basis, because it would help cut down some of the jam up we have, because it isn't just, you know, you have the snow, you have the thing we had people, where bus drivers had to get out and back people down the road and so forth. So it's really not right. So, so we want to make that so we can use it, but also we want to encourage, first of all, the public safety committee is going to make contact with the selectmen to see if they can push this forward, okay? And I think that because they're doing it, we should also do it. So I'm going to read a motion I have here, which I think might help bring it to the fore as far as the selectmen and the other groups are concerned.
Before you read the motion, could you just share what it is about, first, that it's not about specifically about the island, it's about.
Right.
The funding that we've already received.
Right. So the state passed up, you know, twenty-five million, or whatever it was, or billion, I don't even know what it was, but our share was going to be now less than a million dollars to complete the extension of Pine Hill Lane. And, but the way it works is they approve it, and then the governor and the director of transportation and the local reps and local senators, they all have to be involved. Now, I've already contacted the local rep and the local senator, and they wrote a joint letter, which is rather unusual, being a Republican Democrat, they wrote a joint letter for the governor asking that this be released. They sent us a copy. So that's what this is about, to encourage the people of the state before this disappears to release some of this money. And so, as I say, the public safety committees for it, I think we should be for it, and I think we should encourage the selectmen to be for it. So I'll read the motion. I move that Sherwin School Committee reaffirm support for the completion of Pine Hill Lane Extension Project using the plans funded by the Town of Sherwin at the annual town meeting. In addition, we support the release of the million-dollar-plus earmark that was included in the State Transportation Bond Bill. We are also suggesting that our newly constituted five-person worded selectmen reaffirm their support for this project. We respectfully request that the selectmen send written communication to the proper persons and departments to urge the release of the earmark, that they use their contacts and positions on state boards to advance the funding of this project. So it's just sort of a little nudge to them and letting them know what we're doing, and see if we can get them to move forward on this.
You want for a second?
Yes.
Second.
Discussion?
Which annual town meeting was this?
I don't have that in front of me right now.
But you want to include that in this?
It wasn't the one that, so when was the town built? Not this year, but not last year, but the year before?
Year before.
So it was that town meeting?
Well, it was probably the year before that.
The year before that's town meeting?
Yeah.
So yeah, I think I agree with that, that probably be good.
Yeah.
So can we just amend and say that we vote for it?
We would amend the date, okay, because I have the, I have the plans home, so.
And it would have been the town meeting before those plans.
Yeah, right. And Peter has a copy, too. All right, so.
Was that, was that town meeting vote done in conjunction? Was it done after the state?
No, it was done before.
Yes, so, so the Transportation Bond Bill was part of the FY12 acts of two thousand and twelve, so it's amendment to the state budget.
Yeah.
The Transportation Bond Bill, if you look it up online, again, it's provided some information in the packet. So it was done in two thousand and twelve, and you can find that online. Many, 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 many communities in the current law were identified for earmarks from that two hundred and twenty-five million. The way that that works, once the legislature passes it, it really is in the hands of the governor, working with the administration finance office. They monitor the bonding capacity that the state has, so it often takes a number of years for the bonding capacity, which changes from year to year as previous projects are paid off. And what happens, and this has been going on for, you know, this isn't the only Transportation Bond Bill that the legislature has ever passed, or capital expenditure bill, but the governor releases portions of it as this capacity becomes available. So, so you never, you know, it's hard to know when the funding's going to be available, but I do think that the suggested motion, I think is a good idea, I think it is good to continue to periodically engage, you know, our state reps and state representatives, senators to inquire about this and actually work with the governor's office to see what can be done.
One thing we could add, we could say, in the Transportation Bond Bill, make this amendment of two thousand and twelve, because that was two thousand and twelve, you have a copy of that. I suspect that the other one was either two thousand and ten or two thousand and nine, that we actually spent the fifty-three thousand dollars or whatever it is for the plants.
Was it before we came on?
I was going to say, I thought that I was even on, so that would be five years ago.
So we came on in two thousand and ten.
Okay, all right.
Not forever.
We know what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, right.
Yes, yes.
We're just reaffirming our support for it.
That's right.
And I'm sure the selectmen know.
Sort of bring it to their, everyone's memory and bring it to the fore so they can perhaps support this. Because, you know, as it is, they forget about it, they're doing other things, so I'd just like to get them to move.
Okay, if that makes sense. Let's take the motion. All in favor? Any opposed?
I have a, I have a few questions going back to the FY16, if we can.
Yep.
Just to make sure I understand this. So the, like, for the air handlers, you got budget seventeen thousand, and I should remember this, but I don't, and then the Green Communities Grant was thirty thousand, seven ninety-seven. That's the same air handler, right?
Right, remember, that project was, that project was bundled, so with the air handlers and the classroom UNIVENT work, that was done as one project.
So, so how, so how much is left? Like, the balance for the air handlers, that eleven seven, that's left, right?
Right.
UNIVENTS, the eighteen six is left.
Correct.
The soft, insulation twenty-eight, nine ninety-two is left.
Correct.
So how, how does, how is that, since money was appropriated at the town meeting, what's done with that leftover money? It depends on how the warrant was written?
Right, and it's used for extraordinary repairs to the school. It's written very broadly, so that if you had it passed and your boiler broke, you could fix your boiler with it, or you could do something else.
So, yeah, that's how it was explained to me.
Yeah.
And so, so what is, I think, what is important to recognize here, and especially when you look at what was not funded, I'm going to be FY16 or FY17 capital plan, the completion of the window replacement.
Yeah.
Projects. You know, that was, that was estimated, the latest, the latest information that the capital committee received, was that that cost was around two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
So let's just say, for example, that's what the estimate is to complete the project after the design phase. What I believe is, is an option for the capital subcommittee to recommend is to complete the work and finish the window replacement in FY18, is an opportunity to utilize the remaining balance of the capital that's already been.
Yeah, reduced our ask, right?
So theoretically, right now, there's fifty-nine, three hundred dollars. That is the balance that is identified by the air handlers, classroom UNIVENTS, and the roof insulation project. If you add to that the twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, that's still in the window project, that totals around eighty-one thousand dollars. The two sixty-five, I believe, included all the design work, that was the estimate. So what I'm saying is that whatever the final estimate for the completion of the window project is, let's say, for example, it's two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, the ask in FY18 could be two sixty-five minus eighty-one, so we don't have to ask for the full month, we can assume that we could use the balance.
So how do we, how do we know that for sure?
Well, what, what we've done before on the warrant, and I know we did this last year, was we had some of these leftover capital items from previous years, not. had some of these leftover capital items from previous years, not at the school, but in other departments. And when we wrote the article, it said to be funded, it always says to be funded through an exception of Prop 2.5, or through free cash, but what we would say is to be funded 80,000 from appropriations from 2016 and 180,000 through Prop 2.5.
So where are we with the design work? Because that's to get these windows finally picked to bed, we've got to do that, and that theoretically would have been done by now.
As I said earlier, as I indicated, the hope is that that work will be completed during the summer.
The design?
Yes, that work was on track to be done, and sometime around the middle of February it came to a halt.
But we, so what's, it's got to, there's got to be an RFP, right? Because it was going to be potentially more than 25 grand?
What are the rules on design?
35,000 dollars is the minimum limit to, for public bidding, but there are other rules, which I don't know off the top of my head, you'll have to look at for design work. The design work can be debated differently than, you know, other capital projects.
So I guess we were not satisfied with the people that did the design on the previous installation. Frank, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I think Keesha had some concerns and wanted to look at other possibilities.
Right.
Doesn't mean necessarily out, but.
Well, that's why we spent the 5,500 bucks on.
Yeah, pure result.
And so I guess, how is that, whoever does the design, how is that going to be determined? Because the guys, we weren't very happy with some of the guys, we were happy with the people that did the SOF type work, if they came back with the 5,500, here's sort of what you need to do, or if they did that consulting work, I guess.
My suggestion would be, Greg, that the Capitol Subcommittee meets again before the end of school to.
To finalize that?
Yeah, to kind of figure out, kind of go back, where were we, what do we actually have to do coming forward to finish the assignment?
Let's get Ralph and Keesha on board, because she's the architect, too.
Okay.
Monthly financial report?
Yes, we're done with that, no one else has any questions, right, with the capital? All right, great. So monthly financial, please.
I'm only going to speak since 8:30 or 3:00, we could provide a 8:30 first report here information. If you look at the narrative, the narrative analysis, for salaries, there's a balance right now of 78,000 dollars, and we're projecting that we'll close the year out with a positive variance of 51,000 dollars. And the difference between 78 and 51 is the, we are assuming at this point that we'll expend the substitute line, we just had a long-term substitute situation. So we're making that assumption now, that assumption may be different in June, that's still a considerable amount of money, given there's two months left. But that's the assumption now, and we can update that. We are assuming that we will expend the professional development money, sure we will. And for custodial services, you know, it's that negative 4917 salaries is really due to custodial overtime. And right now, we're projecting that we may need an additional 2,500 dollars. I think that's a really aggressive number, but that's our placeholder for now. So that's how we get from the 78 to the 51. We're going to spend the 20,700, the 3,300, and an additional 2,500 in custodial services. I'm pretty sure that number will change to a more positive variant when we look at this again in June.
What's the overtime?
Custodial overtime. So you don't have, the custodial services line is made up of three or four salary lines. So it's the regular salary pay, that's one line, there's differential pay, that's another line, and then there's custodial overtime, that's a third salary line within that function code. So here, we show them grouped together. Together, there's a 4900 dollar deficit, but that's all related to overtime.
Okay, well, I guess I can see how you'd have overtime if you had a lot of snow removal or, but.
Well, there are activities that happen in the building that it needs to be custodial coverage. Re-budget, budget for FY16, I'm pretty sure, I was just looking at that information this afternoon, I think it's about 17,000 dollars for the year. I will tell you, Greg, that I'm looking at that number.
It seemed like that would be reasonably predictable, I know they have a lot of stuff at night, but I was just curious if there was something in particular going on.
I have to tell you, I think it would be something you could reasonably predict, but that's why I'm looking into it.
Because we're paid for, so when they have to be here at night, or what would be overtime, would the schools compensate for people that are using the gym and things like that, right?
Right, wouldn't there be revolving fund that shouldn't theory cover?
So these are all the questions that I've been asked.
Okay, good.
So more to come, but we're trying to be conservative at this point in the year with what the projection is. So while I don't, I don't know, we're projecting an additional 2,500 in overtime.
It would be interesting to know the number of Pine Hill or school-related events versus, that require overtime versus paying outsiders overtime.
We are doing that analysis.
Are there any other questions you've already thought of that we should now ask?
Is that the building rental fund, I guess? When people?
Yes, so you have some information on that. So expenditures at this point, the narrative suggests that we're looking at a positive variance of about 75,000 dollars. And it's highlighted where that 75,000 dollar variance would come from, about 50,000 dollars in utilities. But again, I will tell you, the heat has been on in all of our buildings much longer this year than it typically is this year. You know, we had spring, that came in March, winter came back, and spring, I think, just came back maybe in the last couple of days, we will see. So that's our best estimate now, again, we'll know more in June. In addition to that, we expect that we will have about 7,000 dollars in the transportation services line. That budget number was actually, the original budget number, the actual budget number came right from the contract, but we are actually getting rebates on that budget from the bus company because of fuel costs. So that's why there's that positive variance there. We also anticipate that between now and the end of the year, we'll spend, will have remaining about 15,000 dollars in contracted services, which would come from the teacher specialist line, about 10,000 there, and the 5,000 from the psychological services line. And then, you know, another 2,000 or so coming from custodial services, and that's just a guess right now, could be higher, could be lower. Next, I would give to the 75,000 dollar positive variance. I will say that it's also important to note that as we went through the FY17 budget development process, these line items, which are showing these large positive variances, we reduced. So, you know, it will be interesting to see what these numbers show at this time next year.
I have a question. I mean, spring was cold, but the winter wasn't as cold, I don't think it's last year. But is, are there any degree day analysis done on how much we think the insulation, the SOF insulation might have saved us? Is that one reason we might have a lower cost?
You know, that work wasn't completed until well into the winter.
Okay.
And so I think that would be difficult to really get a good analysis on that. I'm sure it will make a difference going forward. And then in our district, which is Transportation, we have the, you know, that variance that we're showing, the positive variance that we're showing has been consistent over the last number of months. Where I will tell you, and we've had no new placement, however, some activity has heated up in the last month or so, so we could possibly see an additional 10 to 12,000 dollars being spent from those lines. So that's just kind of a heads up. Overall, when you add up, at this point, the salary variance, the expenditures variance, the special ed variance, plus the anticipated return of the circuit breaker reimbursement, now that adds up right now to about 3,375,000. So more to come on that. And back to the question that was raised about the area unit, there may be money available in that custodial services line, which is now showing a balance of 19,000 dollars. That's something that we can work with Ralph and Peter on, and if that's something that the committee, you know, wants to consider, we'll come back at the June meeting with information, more detailed information on that item as well.
Just one thing to note from town meeting, which I'm sure you all know, the Special Education Stabilization Fund was approved, and we're going to use 100,000 from free cash, with the anticipation that the circuit breaker's coming back to fund that Special Education Stabilization Fund.
And how big will that?
About 100,000.
But how big will it get to, to fund?
I'm not sure, we're just initially funding it with 100,000, and then I think going forward, we'll look and see whether, you know, that needs to change. I think right now, it's kind of a backstop, because the last few years, you wouldn't have needed it, just because you've had overages in the special education. But now that we've increased our budgeting of the circuit breaker, we'll see what next year brings and then revisit it, I think.
I'm so glad that you got that accomplished, you got that through, that's a real fund, that's really good, good job.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. Okay.
And then the only other document was the revenue account, the next one is something that's in the revenue.
Maybe any questions about those, everyone's good.
Why is mine, why do you hear me? Does your number's back?
All right, well, done with that, let's go to the consent agenda. Do you want me to read the, do you need to read the motion for the playground, or can I just do that as a full?
You know, I think this is a considerable gift, and so I think it would be welcome to do that as a separate motion.
Okay, so should I read it, or should Barbara read it, since it's from her?
I think the school committee should read that as a motion.
Okay, so the motion is, Barbara sent this to, she said, "I respectfully request that Sherburne School Committee vote favorably to accept the gift of a new playground that was most generously donated by Arvis and Susan Tybety. The gift has an estimated value of 70,000 dollars. The playground is located behind the Pine Hill School and was designed with early childhood learners in mind. Play area affords a variety of structures for climbing, swinging, water, and music play. And all pre-K through grade five students will have access to the new play area. So I move to accept the gift by the Tybety family of 70,000 for the Sherburne, for the Pine Hill School playground."
Second.
Any?
Yeah, I mean, will appropriate person write a letter of thanks also?
Yes.
Okay.
It's incredible.
It is, I have to say, anyone who has not seen the playground, go out back before the school light out, go back, it's really cool. Like even the older kids are like.
It's all the kids are talking about.
The fifth graders played on it today with squeals of delight. The fifth graders, the biggest squeal, yeah.
My second grader's classroom is right, her windows look out on it, and she was telling her sister last night, "I saw you out there, why didn't you wave to me?" And her sister was too busy on the playground. She was trying to look at you on the playground.
It's absolutely fabulous, and I have to say, too, the Tybetys were not just generous with their money, but also with their time, with the planning and the research, and really, really amazing. All right, so, all in favor? All right, it's like, do you need this? Thank you so much.
Will I need to go on that letter? Will it be like, an I?
Yes, yeah. Okay, the school committee meeting minutes from March 8?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, I love that. Let's see if there's some communications for your information only, and if there's nothing else, would someone like to, one of the Franks like to move to adjourn?
Go ahead, I move to adjourn.
I second.
Signing off.